City Council Community Ordinance is licensed as Illegal Affairs, co-posted with the Committee of the Whole, meeting in person Thursday, April 3rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing an ordinance, to amend an ordinance relative to water restrictions, Section 46-38, Water Management Plan and Use Restrictions. We will take, be held in City Council chambers, 93 Washington Street, Salem, Massachusetts, second floor. We have with us from the committee, we have Counselor Marsillo, Counselor Cohen, Counselor Stott is with us remotely, let me promote her if she's not promoted. Oh yeah, I'm gonna promote her either way. Joining us from the Committee of the Whole remotely, Counselor Stott, Counselor Watson Fell. Counselor Watson Fell would like it be known that she, for the record, she is here in person. All right, we'll get, we'll just get into this here, and there's, in front of you all, there's an updated ordinance here, the only change to the ordinance, it's a stapled version, the only change is just the inclusion of the ward, the calendar with the ward, so Sunday Ward 1, Monday Ward 2, on page 2. That's the only, that's the only change versus what was filed with us. Who would like to, who, James, would you want to start off here, or how do you want to? And then we'll open it up to any questions from the council. So if you want to just go over some of the reasons behind this, I know this was to stay in compliance, any of the rationale behind it, and then, and then what the changes are that we're, we're looking at here tonight.
Sure, so my name's James Wellach, I'm an attorney for the city of Salem, and the changes before you really are just to come into compliance with the state standard for water management. The registration requirements for all public water supplies include having a tiered system for drought management, so when the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, where they're designee, alerts the city of a drought, they're going to let us know what level of drought it is, and our ordinance is gonna align with a level of drought that's announced, as opposed to how it was previously structured, which was that a city employee, I believe the city engineer designated a drought, and designated what restrictions would be in place for those conditions. So, that's the long and the short of it.
Open it up to questions or any other comments?
This is myself, it's Giovanna Rosinos, Watersuit Engineer.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I will introduce myself, Giovanna Rosinos, Watersuit Engineer with the City Engineering Department, and yet, it's like James said, the idea is just to amend darkness, to be more in compliance with the new Water Management Act restrictions, and now be able to enforce and start declaring the restrictions when in drought, either regional or state level.
Okay, so fair, fair to say this brings us into compliance with state regulations, and gives the city engineer a little more authority to enforce the regulations, and if necessary, to shut off the water for repeated violations. Any questions from the committee, counsel, or Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you Chair. Giovanna, can you just run through the different levels and what the restrictions are, and especially give some, give some more information about the addition that was made, since it was submitted, the days of the week per ward?
So, Level 1 is basically the, I believe moderate restrictions, and is...
We can, I'll just interrupt real quick, sorry, we can hear you perfectly in here, but people at home may not be able to hear you if you're not right directly, if you don't move that mic right down in front of your mouth.
Right, got it, sorry about that. So, Level 1 is considered mild drought, and the restrictions is basically all non-essential outdoor water use is restricted to one day, basically a week, and as what we added to the table, basically we have seven wards, so we just did one day per ward, and the restrictions are that can water between, they can't not water between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM, so outside that timeframe, they are able to water, like each ward will be able to water once a week, and that's a Level 1 restriction. And then there's handheld restrictions that they can do. Level 2, all non-essential water use is banned, except for watering of ornamental flowers and gardens and drip irrigation, so handheld watering is okay, but no big automatic irrigation systems and things like that, and again, all non-essential is banned. Level 3 and Level 4, which are critical drought and drought emergency, is all water banned, all outside water use for non-essentials is completely banned, and so no outside water use, and we could, if needed, add additional restrictions to either Level 3 or Level 4. Hope that makes sense. It doesn't, so what we added to the ordinance was really defining those Level 1, 2, and 3, and given the authority to the city engineer to also make these restrictions, before, as James stated, is the restrictions in the current ordinance are more based on supply levels, but now due to these new regulations, if the state or the region is in a drought condition, then we are obligated to put these restrictions as a community as well.
Thank you, so, so just to go back to the definition of non-essential, just in case people are listening to this, this is irrigation of lawns via sprinklers, or automatic irrigation systems, washing of vehicles, washing of exterior building surfaces, parking lots, driveways or sidewalks, or filling private swimming pools.
That's a somewhat, yeah, limited to, but it's not...
It includes that, but it's not an exhaustive list.
Correct, yeah, that's not a, non-essential, they're non-essential.
Those are non-essential, okay, so, the Level 1, which is the, the, they say mild?
Mild, yeah.
Okay, mild drought, so what you're saying is, if we're in a Level 1 drought, then those non-essential uses, so filling your pool, washing your car, all of that is going to be by ward, day of week?
One day, yeah.
What, I know what you're gonna answer, but can you tell us why that was added? This, this day of the week restriction by ward?
So, the regulations states that no more than one day, and so the way that we did it is, I mean, just to make it easier, we had seven wards, so we said, okay, to give people a specific day of the week that they can do these activities, then we just went through, you know, started on Sunday, and started one through seven, so the restriction, it is limited per regulation up to no more than one day, and so that's how we decided to do it.
So, if you think back to last year, and I don't know if anyone in this room has this data, but were we in a Level 1 drought at all last year before we got to the fall?
I don't know.
Okay, right now, we're in a Level 3, right?
Right.
But that was before all this rain, and so I think in the big, like, this week, I think, isn't it when they re-decide the level?
I believe this is next week.
Next week?
Drought Task Force meeting, and I don't know when the actual declaration will come, but yes, I see the next couple weeks.
But it's unlikely that we're gonna drop from a Level 3 to no drought?
I would say it...
Yeah, so we could drop to a 2 or a 1?
Potentially.
Potentially, potentially, yeah. So, I'm just trying to wrap my head around the inequity, I know this is awful, but it's much easier for people to do these kinds of tasks on the weekend, and only two wards have access to those days, that's gonna be the biggest pushback, people work, right? So, I, like, this was news to me, this, this addition, and I know it's to make it easier, but, I have no more words, I just don't know how to, I don't know how to answer that.
Counselor Cohen and Counselor Watson Fell.
Thank you Chair Harworth, I don't have the answer either, but I do feel like, you know, something we talked about before is, it's probably easier to enforce if you break the city up into sections, so I don't really have the answer, I, I do have a question though. Enforcing this ordinance, what is the discretion by the city? You know, are they, is the city required to initiate these when the state rules that are, we're in a Level 1, 2, or 3, or do we have some discretion?
Based on my understanding that we need to, so there's a deadline of April 8th, that we need to have the power to enforce the restriction, and issue in, put these restrictions in place.
No, I understand, but there's a difference between being able to enforce something and if we're mandated to enforce. If, if we're at a certain drought level, so let's say, I mean, right now we're at Level 3, but if we're at Level 1, and we've only been in Level 1 for a short period of time, we mandated to initiate the ordinance?
You leave so bare.
That's all right, that's all right.
Yes, we are mandated, Deb Duhamel, City Engineer, we are mandated to enforce this ordinance per the state regulations.
So, if I could, so, because we haven't really, Salem-Beverly, we haven't really done this kind of thing for a long time, so the question is, like, is your experience or knowledge that there's a certain amount of time, is it like the state says we're in Level whatever, and then we have so many days, or is it like an immediate? Because, like, one of the things that Counselor Marsillo and I were talking about is, you know, it's, you know, it used to be really easy to communicate to the public, but now there's so many ways that the public gets information, it's not always on the website, or, you know, code red or whatever, as much as we encourage that, so is there, you know, is there like a grace period or a period of time that you have, or do you just get a call at like 8:00 in the morning and that's it?
So, I, I think that what you're getting at is, how will we enforce this? I think we're gonna use, similar to what DPS uses today, if there is, say your brush is overgrown into a sidewalk, the first attempt is, if you, if we see it and someone's available, a verbal notice, and then what we follow up with is a letter that then tells the person, hey, here's some education, you maybe didn't know this, but here's what we're required and obligated to do per state mandate, and then if the action continues.
I appreciate that, I think it's difficult to, to do just like, you know, sidewalks or whatever, but if the state sends out a notice to communities that you're in Level 2, at what point do we have to start to...
The, so, I, I do want to first answer the, you know, Sunday and the weekends, so the allowance is only before 9:00 AM and after 5:00, so you can't water during the day in any case. So, I, and I, I agree, you know, folks on the weekend maybe have more opportunity after 5:00, you know, maybe they get home, they're home at 5:00 versus someone who doesn't get home until 6:00, if you have any suggestions on how to make it more manageable, or do we just say the whole city can only water on Saturdays? I don't, again, we were just trying to come up with some way, we're certainly open to suggestion, the regulation only requires that it's one day a week, so, for everybody, so we were just trying to offer days, so let me know what you think about that, and Water Management Act, these regulations have been on the books for over two years for the implementation of them. Salem and Beverly have been somewhat holding off because we are appealing, and unfortunately, the appeal isn't being heard until sometime in July, so we are obligated at this point to move forward with implementing this regulation.
Okay, I have one last question, just to the time of day, is that because the state has deemed it that within those 9 to 5, people will use more water because it will evaporate? Is that the concept?
I think it's the effectiveness of watering, so I think watering is more effective outside before it gets to the heat of the day, and then after the heat of the day is done, I think that's why they've set that up.
That's kind of what I was asking, but I didn't do it as, as well as I wanted.
Counselor Watson Fell.
Thank you Chair, just so I'm super clear, you cannot water between 9:00 and 5:00, you can only water outside those hours, okay, on the designated day at a Level 1, okay, great. I, yeah, I, I think that Counselor Marsillo is right in her comments, that I think we're gonna get a lot of pushback on which wards during which day of the week, and, and yet, on the flip side of that coin, I understand the logic, if we were to say everybody can only water on Saturday or Sunday, or you split, you split it's 4:00 and, you know, 4:00 and 3:00, or whatever we want to do over the weekends, and then we get a really rainy weekend, like, then no, you know, I can understand, it's like squeezing Jell-O a little bit, but, but having been said, I think what would be best for the public's understanding is, what kind of logic went into determining which ward on which day of the week? For example, was there an assessment of properties with lawns or gardens or large property plots that went into your decision-making around the combination of, you know, more, more people are home and doing these activities on a weekend, therefore let us load the property areas in Salem that have more land to the weekend, like, was there any of that logic in place, or was this really just like, Monday 1, Tuesday 2, okay, I'm seeing nodding, so for the public's awareness, it is Monday 1, Tuesday 2, right, okay. With regards to the pushback, and just generally, it is always most helpful if there's some level of sort of like logical thought or approach, or a really determined statement that says, like, there doesn't need to be a logical approach to this, this is why this is okay, just to give all of us and, and the public some level of understanding around how it happened. I think from the public's perspective, and I know we face this a lot, it's like the worst thing you can do is just kind of throw it over the fence, and then have us go out to all of them and go like, we shrug, right, like, I think there's, there's an expectation of intentionality when we put a level of detail like this into an ordinance, and so, with that having been said, I'm not trying to find, you know, appropriation money for a whole study citywide, but if, if that's a thing you think you should go back and think about, how should we proceed from here? Or does it not matter? Like, tell me it doesn't matter, do you know what I mean?
From my perspective, it doesn't matter, it's really just an inability for us to enforce something, right? If we said, everybody in the city can only water on Saturday, and most of us aren't here on Saturday, then that makes it really hard for us to enforce that, and it also makes it impossible, if we were to say everybody can water on Wednesday, for us to enforce that, right? Because it's the whole city doing it at once, so we really just need to break it out. I don't know that, I don't know if an opportunity for looking at land area and who has what, I don't know, I don't, I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how that, I don't know how that would necessarily benefit someone, and...
Yeah, I think the logic, so my thinking was simply, that would lead to a higher likelihood on a day where you have a higher likelihood, do you know what I mean? It's just like, if we were doing an assessment, you go, okay, who, you know, Saturday and Sunday are easier days to perform these activities, who's going to be performing those activities? People with land are going to be performing those activities, therefore let us, you know, if there's more large plots of green spaces in certain wards, let's prioritize those on a day when we know people are going to be looking to do those activities, because it seems to match up, right? That's a matrix of thought, but if it doesn't matter, I'm all for not mat, not mattering. I also think, you know, I'm, I understand the division as well, because from an enforcement perspective, you can't be all over the city unilaterally, right? You want to be in a concentrated place, so I understand that that logic makes sense too. My second concern around this though, because now we're getting into like, a complication of sorts, is your communication plan for how to know not only what level we're at, you know, you drive through cities all the time, there's massive signs, yellow-orange signatures that show you everywhere where we are, but also this ward level activity, time constraints, how are, how is, what's the plan for communicating this?
So, for, we are planning, and we are required to put signage around the city, so there will be signage posted when the declaration is made, so potentially next week, for the Level 3, which is the current state, we are working with the mayor's office as well to do a press release about these restrictions, and we probably will be posting this information on the website, and we, we're planning also to potentially do a code red before the signs go up, so people know, okay, these are coming up.
Yeah, I would, I would absolutely suggest code red, especially maybe following the, the street sweeping pattern as well, with regards to your neighborhood, has this happening on this date, something at a neighborhood level of well, as well, just to make sure people really know what their allowances are, and thank you, I'm gonna step away for just a second.
Get to Counselor Marsillo and Counselor Cohen, just one second, can I ask, um, does, I guess the question I'm just, that we're circling around on the, on the days, is an enforcement every day on this, so would it be, we're not allowing watering five days or six days a week, and then the one day we're allowing it, so why not, why not just say, when we're in this condition, everyone can water on a set day, Saturday or Sunday? Is there a reason why that, why it needs to be spread out throughout the week? It almost seems more confusing, because then people would be like, I can't remember what day my ward gets, I don't know what ward I'm in, a lot of people don't know the ward that they're in, unless you're an active voter, I almost feel like it's easier for all involved to just say Saturdays are it during this time, because we could also move into a different, a different level, couldn't we, before someone's day comes up, and then they're out of luck on that, but Counselor Marsillo?
Thank you Chair, I think there's so many ways to do this, which is why I have a problem with this in the ordinance as opposed to a regulation, you put this in an ordinance, and to change the day of the week is an act of God, you have to come back to the council, and we have to have two votes on it, this should be pulled out and made a regulation in the engineering department, then you can change it whichever way you want, right? I would suggest looking at something like, you know, if, if we're in a Level 1, you can do this kind of watering or cleaning of your boat or whatever between Thursday and Monday, period, don't do it by ward, just do a set number of days, right, span a weekend to give people some flexibility, you're just adding complexity by doing it ward by ward, because not everyone has the same work schedule, I just really feel like this is a problem, and you're adding to the enforcement problems that you're already gonna have. I, I just think that there's a better way to do it, I don't know what it is, but you don't want it in the ordinance, you want it as a regulation.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead Deb.
Great, so, so what I'm hearing is, your preference is to leave it that it's one day, but leave it vague, so that way, and take the dates out?
I would probably say, as, one day per week as set by the city engineer, and then, but, yep.
That was gonna be my next question, how do I get the authority to be able to set the regulation? So, that, that's the language that would, yeah, okay.
Counselor Cohen.
Thank you Chair Harworth, I agree, we have lots of ordinances that refer to regulations, you know, for the health agent, for inspections or whatever, you know, if we were gonna stick to days, I'm really glad that Ward 5 is not on a Friday, because my trash pickup is on Friday, and when it's a holiday, there's a lot of missed trash, and people are upset about that. I also feel like I have the smallest ward area-wise, so I probably have the least amount of really large, you know, yards, but it's an equity thing, like, people with small yards water a lot, so I'm, I'm really supportive of Counselor Marsillo's that we just take out the graph, or make a motion if that's necessary.
It's actually not, I think we would have had, had motion to bring it in, because it was actually not before us initially, so...
Okay, so, but do we have something that refers to a regulation?
So, on the original, the original is the paperclip version here. I think we'd be on, be on page 2 at the bottom, and then I guess after, no more than one day per week, what we say, on a day set by the city engineer, is that the, was that the best language, or via a regulation set by the city engineer, I don't know, I guess I would leave it to, to, to James if you could, you understand the intent, what we're trying to do, so you could...
Yeah, that sounds, that sounds good, the...
You could just update that before the next council meeting? Yeah, we haven't voted on it yet, but that's just, I guess I'll just take some questions or comments from the council, or from Counselor Stott, who has her hand raised. Can you hear us Counselor Stott? Let me, the TV volume up.
I can, can you hear me? I'll let the echo pass, am I good? Okay, thank you, Chair, for letting me speak, not being a member of the committee, so I just wanted to say, I'm excited to see this actually, I feel like I was begging for drought restrictions last summer, I'm, I'm sorry, someone's calling me, excited to see this being enacted, I completely agree, I, I understand the intent of trying to help with the enforcement, but I, I don't, I don't think it would help, I think it would actually be burdensome, you'd have to have an inspector out seven days a week, I think, it seems, I, I get the idea behind it, but it doesn't seem like it would be the requirement, so I was just gonna say that I think regulation is more appropriate for this, I do, just because I'm at my computer, is able to do some quick Googling, like, PBD does something like, if your house is an even number, you can do this day, and if your house is an odd number, you can do this day, some towns do Saturday or Sunday, or actually, one that I thought was smart was, you could water either Tuesday or Saturday, like, one of those two days, so I think there are some all creative solutions that the city engineer can probably work with, because this is going to be a change for the public, there haven't, in my recent memory, there haven't been water, actual water restrictions placed upon the residents, so this is gonna be a really big kind of learning curve, which I think is needed, but it's gonna be a, a big curve and communication that will need to happen, so I think the simpler we can go, especially with the ordinance piece, is, is wiser.
Counselor Marsillo and Counselor Watson Fell.
Thank you Chair, my next point is education, and getting the word out about all these definitions, about the different levels of drought, and what's allowed when, and what is not allowed, I would, my big, my suggestion is to come up with something like the trash and recycling flyer that people get once a year, goes on their refrigerator, they know, they know what the, the calendar is, right? Something that can go out with a water bill, that people, you know, that it's heavy stock or something, that can, that can be put on a bulletin board or a refrigerator, so that you know, so when you get the code red call saying, hey, we just entered a, a Level 2 drought, you know, and you need to do this, and this, and this, they know where to look and remind themselves what to do, so it's kind of a two-phase, like, we need to do a lot of education on this, as Counselor Stott said, and this would be a, a really important piece, is something that's savable, and that the city website can refer to, and you can print it out from there even, we just need to do everything we can to educate people about also why we're doing it, even though we've got this big reservoir, and we do, we, we do not have a lack of water, and we need to make that clear, we don't have a lack of water, but we need to conserve natural resources, we just need to do that, especially during a drought, so, and the state's making us, so there you go, but that's, that's my suggestion, and I'm also, I just want to also, you know, circling back, is the idea that when we change drought level, there's gonna be a code red, and we're gonna use like, some sort of court, you know, entrance corridor bulletin board type messaging to say, you know, okay, yes?
The signs that we are trying to post are permanent signs that will have the option to put the... that will have the option to put the level, different levels, so it's changeable level. So the sign will be posted in, basically, the entry corridors, and we have the three levels, like different colors, just also to guide. And if there's not a level, I think the idea was to do just blank, but I will let Ray just speak a little more.
So we, we're working on these, the signed blanks right now for the city. And right now, it's looking like interchangeable blanks that will have an actual identifier to the level and a color code, so it can actually draw it to the mapping that we
What is a blank?
So a blank is like a signed blank. I apologize. So a signed blank would be something that we would affix the general information of the cities in a level, cities in a drought, we are at a current level of 1. I think we've all gone to different cities and states where we've seen like Smokey the Bear, right? We're at a Level 1, we're at a Level 2, conserve water, whatever. So it's, it's, it's gonna be along the lines of that type of signage that's gonna be posted at entry sites. And that signage and those color coatings and those messagings are going to match what we put out there in the code red or in a mailer. It'll, it'll all blend seamlessly, so it would be the same message.
Counselor Marcello, do you wanna make a motion on that language before we continue?
Sure.
Well, not, not, we're not gonna, just, just we'll continue the meeting after if there's any other questions. But I just wanted to make a motion on the, on the actual addition of the language before we move forward, as set by the city engineer.
So I make a motion to add to, let me see, F1?
Yep.
F1, as, as specified, Level 1 as specified by the engineering department regulations, set, or whatever better wording from the layer, but that's.
I'm not sure if we have regulations now. Do we, do we currently have current water use regulation? So as set by the city engineer makes the most sense to me.
Okay. Seconded by Counselor Cohen. All those in favor? Unopposed? Matter carries? Any other comments or questions about the water ordinance? Counselor Cohen.
I just have one comment. We may have plenty of water now, but we don't know what's coming. And we've already seen things, more tornadoes in New England, fires and things like that. And so I think, you know, we need to get ready for what's in the future.
Yeah. I guess I'll just ask one question as we, I assume that rain barrels are not subject to this. Does, that, that does not need to be specified within this ordinance anywhere, correct? That we don't need to clarify that to someone like Counselor Cohen, who collects rainwater. He can, he can water, and Deb, he can water on days, any day that he like, as long as he's using that.
And actually, that was one of the things I was going to mention a little bit earlier, is that people should use this opportunity to look at ways to conserve water, and hopefully the education campaign will offer that as well. Salem and through Salem Sound Coast Watch often has opportunities to go to workshops to build rain barrels and to get rain barrels for free. So it's a great way. Plants prefer that water to chlorinated water anyway, so.
Any other questions or comments? Any other motions? I guess we still need a final motion to send this back to the council, if we'd like to do that. And then Counselor Cohen.
I move that we refer the ordinance back to the full council with a positive recommendation as written.
Counselor Cohen recommends that we refer to the full council with a positive recommendation as amended, seconded by Counselor Marcello. All those in favor? Any opposed? Matter carries. And then one more motion, Counselor Cohen. Move to adjourn. Counselor Cohen moves to adjourn. All those in favor? Any opposed? We adjourn. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.